I guess I can say good afternoon and welcome to a beautiful day here at the Headquarters, Central Office. This is my favorite time of year. We finally got through all the heat and all we need now is a little shower to follow it up and we'll be in good shape. Looking forward to the next frost or the first frost, but I'm glad y'all could make it today. Ms. Mickus, roll call, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley?
Here. If you'd like to join us and stand for the pledge followed by the invocation, feel free to do so. Indication will be led by Chase Atkins, a student of West Washita. Attention, salute, pledge.
I present the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
If you would all bow your heads in reverence to the Lord. Dear Heavenly Father, as a representative of West Washita, we would like to give you thanks for this opportunity to be recognized in front of this school board. God, we understand that our accomplishments do not come from anybody else other than you. We give thanks to the strength that you give us on a daily basis. God, I would just like to thank you for allowing everybody to have a safe travel here, and I just pray that you extend your hands over each and every one of us. In your name and everything we do, be it to your glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We have a need a motion for the approval minutes for September 12th.
I'm like, okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Any discussion? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Do we have any cards today, Mr. President?
No cards on the day, Mr. Coleman.
None whatsoever. Thank you. Personnel report?
We're good.
We're good, Mr. Como.
I'm sorry, we need to do the agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I so move that we approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Now we have the personnel report.
I think we're good, Mr. Como.
We're good. Moving right on to business. Special recognition, Ms. Alane Smee.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We're excited to do some recognitions today. We are going to start with one that I'm sure you've all heard about, and we're going to be celebrating this more and more as the weeks come. We're going to recognize Bowley Elementary, who became the third school in the Washita Parish School District to receive the distinction from the U.S. Department of Education as a blue ribbon school. Mr. Guy, if you'd like to. Bring your team. Bowley was recognized as an exemplary achievement, gap closing school, national blue ribbon school for 2023 by the U.S. Secretary of Education. We're very proud of Mrs. Bates and her faculty. There is a community event after school on Monday, I believe, if I said that correctly, and you'll be getting more information about that via email. All right, next, we're going to recognize a couple of teachers who are doing great things as well. Ms. Kara Hawkins, if you will come up. Stay on down here, Mr. Guy. We're going to put you to work.
I have to give him my martial arts.
All right. Kara is a fifth grade teacher at Corley Elementary School, and she was named the BFW District 11 Teacher of the Year, hosted by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. This is Stephanie with the BFW and Denise. We're glad to have y'all here. And now Kara is going to advance to compete at the state level in the patriotism contest. That's awesome. Let's get Kara here. You can stay up. You guys can stay up. And then next, we have Tabitha DeShazo. She's from Sterlington Middle School. Come on up, Tabitha. Did I say that wrong?
DeShazo.
DeShazo, okay. And she placed second and was also recognized for her patriotism and community service. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Beatty, do you want to join us down on the floor?
My Beatty.
Okay, so we are going to welcome up four students right now. I'm going to have them all come up. They're from West Washita High School. We have Jace Atchinson, Tai Chi, Daniel McBride, and Aiden Stanfield. Come on up, guys. You can all hang some in your uniforms. Okay, these FFA students are the Louisiana FFA State Champions in Environmental and Natural Resources DDE for 2023, and they will be competing at Nationals at the end of October in Indianapolis at the FFA convention. Their instructor's going to come up for you, too. Congratulations, guys. All right, next, we're going to have some students from West Monroe High School. These students received recognition in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. We'll start with Mr. Nathan Panich. All right. Come on up.
We're good. Go ahead.
You guys, any West Monroe Board members want to come down? You're welcome to. All right, Nathan has been honored as a commended scholar for his academic promise. In recognition of his outstanding ability and potential for academic success in college, Nathan will receive a letter of commendation. Being recognized in this way allows him an opportunity for special merit scholarship awards offered by statewide agencies and corporate sponsors. Congratulations. What did you score on your ACT, Nathan? We need you.
Thirty-five.
Yeah. Awesome. Congratulations. All right, we also have two West Monroe High School students who were named semifinalists in the program. We'll go ahead and call up Mr. John Wesley Floyd. So he is one of two students from the district named to the prestigious list that's made up of 16,000 semifinalists across the nation. More than 1.3 million applied from approximately 21,000 high schools, so this is the number of students we're competing with. John scored a 35 also, maintained a 4.0 GPA thus far in his academic career, and he is a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. The scholarship finalists will be announced beginning April through July. We wish you all the luck of all. And then we'll call up Brantley Martin, also from West Monroe High School, also a National Merit semifinalist. Brantley scored 35, maintained a 4.0. We'll be awaiting you in that class of finalists as well. Brantley Martin. So I would say between these National Merit semifinalists and commended students are great teachers with the BFW awards and the FFA going to national competition, Washita Parish is very well-represented across the nation. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Greg Manley to make our final recognition statement.
Well, thank you, Alane. I appreciate it. I'll sit here and then I'll come to the podium when the right time comes.
All right.
I'd like to make a few comments before I do that, but today I want to honor and recognize a special person to the Washita Parish High School football family. This person is Mr. John Jones. And John, I recognize John probably back in the late 90s as a number-one Lion fan, but today we want to make a resolution on behalf of the board and present it to John. But let me tell you a little bit about John. John moved to Washita Parish in 1973 with his dad, Brother Ralph Jones, and his mom, Ms. Joanelle Jones. Brother Ralph was a pastor at Don O'Bates Church at that time. So I've been knowing John most of his life, and John was a student of Washita Parish School System and went through the Washita Parish School System. He began fond of Lion Football Team in 1973 when he came to Washita Parish. His mom and dad would take him to the games, and I remember seeing John in the stands when I would go to the games. And John's real enthusiastic, and everybody that's ever played football at Washita High School in the last 50 years knows John Jones because John makes himself known in the stands. And today, we want to honor, recognize, and thank him for the service that he's given to us and the faithful attendance and support he's given to Washita Lions for the last 50 years. So what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do now is read the resolution that's signed by all the board members, and I'll present that to John here in just a second. Let me read the resolution. Resolution, "Whereas John Jones is a past student of the Washita Parish High School, and whereas, beginning in 1973, John has attended almost every home football game and most of the away games as well, and whereas John is a permanent fixture in Lion Stadium and a well-known, great friend and supporter of our athletes and community, be it therefore resolved that on this 17th day of October in the year 2023, that we, the members of the Washita Parish School Board, extend our deepest gratitude to John Jones as we respectfully acknowledge the support for our former student and friend as a number-one Washita Parish Lion Football Fan." So thank you, John. We appreciate all your support over the many years, and I'll make this presentation in just a minute. But I wanted to also tell you that Friday night, I talked to the principal, Mr. Charles Wright, and Friday night, we're going to recognize and honor John also. Mr. Wright will make a presentation on the football field before the West Monroe and Washita High School football game at Lion Stadium this Friday night. And we have a sign that's made up, and we've shown a picture of it on the big screen here. That sign will be on permanent display attached to the press box at Lion Stadium as an appreciation for John's loyal and faithful support for the last 50 years. And I got to thinking about that coming to the meeting today, and it's mind-boggling to realize someone would attend high school ballgames and be as faithful as John Jones has for the last 50 years. So I think it's well-deserved and a special recognition for him today. So thanks, John, again, for your service and faithful support of Washita Lion Football. Your lives go, John. But before I make the presentation, take a picture with John and his family. John has been battling stage four colon cancer for the past several months. And John's a born-again Christian. He loves Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior, and one of these days, he's going to be standing before Jesus as Lord and Savior, and he's going to hear the words, "Well done, there are good and faithful servants." And his faith is going to come sight at that time. So it's going to be a great day, and hallelujah to him. So at this time, I'd like to make the presentation and take a picture with John.
Mr. Johnson, maybe you can find some more, though. I don't know where you're at.
Alane, and congratulations to all of the recipients. Lot of hard work involved with all these recognitions and the work that's done by our students and teachers. Moving on to item number two. Consider renaming Rebel Club Pavilion in honor of Coach Jerry Orledge. As a kid, like many of you, you probably sat around on Saturday morning and watched The Tom and Jerry Show. It never dawned on me that years later that we'd be watching The Don and Jerry Show. All of you know the story. Coach Shells and Coach Orledge coming to this community, took over a program that played several homecoming games each year, which was an honor. Turned that program into a strong district program, won multiple district championships, turned it into a state championship program, won several of those, and was also named national championship, which is a tremendous job on their part. We received a letter wanting to request that this pavilion be named, and we went through the process for deciding whether to move forward or not, and the decision of the committee was to move forward and name the club, the pavilion, after Coach Orledge. So I'd like to entertain a motion to honor Coach Orledge by naming this pavilion.
Do you need a second? I'll make the motion?
That's fine.
Okay. I so move that we name the Rebel Club Pavilion in honor of Coach Jerry Orledge.
Have a motion. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll have a second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you very much. And I'm sure there will be something, Mr. Lane, at a later date. Do you have that date?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. Moving to number two. Consider renaming the Washita Parish High School Madhouse Basketball Court in honor of Frederick Barry McHenry. Mr. Graves?
I'd like to make a motion. I'm going to get a, I'm having trouble with my voice today, so I'm going to get Coach Manley to read it for me. Everybody loves McHenry. He's done a lot for Richwood and Washita, and he does well to finish the score.
Thank you, Davey. I'll be glad to read this for you. Freddie Barry McHenry was a graduate of Richwood High School and Grambling State University. His career in education spanned 51 years, with 45 of those years in the Washita Parish School System. In the Washita Parish School System, Coach McHenry served as athletic director and head football coach at Richwood High School before moving to Washita Parish High School as the athletic director in 1987, and remained there for the next 32 years until the time of his retirement in 2019. While serving as athletic director at Richwood High School and Washita Parish High School, Coach McHenry oversaw numerous district and state championship teams in multiple sports. He served many years on the executive board of the Louisiana High School Athletic Directors Association and served a term as the Louisiana, Louisiana High School Athletic Director's Representative on the Louisiana High School Executive Committee. Coach McHenry received the Louisiana High School Athletic Association Distinguished Service Award, the highest honor awarded by the Louisiana High School Athletic Association in January of 2019. Coach Freddie Barry McHenry was an icon in high school athletics in Washita Parish and across the state of Louisiana. He never met a student or coach that he would not try to give help in pursuing their life and career goals.
All in, I'd like to make a motion that we name the basketball court after Freddie Barry McHenry.
Second. Have a motion and a discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Item number three. Consider renaming Washita Basketball, Washita Parish High School Basketball Court in honor of, well, I just did. Next one. Consider renaming Washita Parish High School Basketball Concession Lobby in honor of Ken and Rita Slusher. Davey Graves?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to name it Concession Stand. We've done this years ago, but that was officially brought before the board, so today I'd like to bring it before the board to make it official. Ken worked for the school system for 26 years. He was on the Washita Parish School Board for about 10 years. He went to high school at Washita. He was a quarterback. He's an outstanding athlete in every sport. He played them all. And Ken and Rita both had worked at Concession Stand for, I guess, 30 years on, I don't know how long he worked for them. The sign's already there, and I'd like to make it official now that we named the Slusher Concession Stand.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Consider renaming East Washita Middle School Weight Room in honor of Kurt Hyden. Davey Graves?
Yes. Kurt Hyden worked for Washita School System all of his life. He's always worked. He's been 26 years with us and 22 of Washita Parish High School. He had a good chance of becoming a principal, an EO, and he caught cancer, and it didn't last long. About three months later, we lost him. Everybody loved Kurt. He was one nice, fine fellow. I'd like to name a weight room after him. The sign's already been made. It's up, you know, things, so to honor Kurt and all the time he spent in Washita Parish School System and all the work he put in with it, I'd like to name my weight room Kurt Hyden.
That's your motion?
Second.
Have a motion to name Weight Room after Kurt? Any discussion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Motion. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Item six. Consider renaming Washita Junior High School Band Room in honor of Jack White. Davey Graves?
He's another long-term man. When I was in high school, I started high school in 1964. He was there when I got there, so Manny went there. He was at Washita High School for years. He left there and went to Northeast, and started the band there, wanted nationwide recognition. The school board member for years. You couldn't find a nicer or finer fella than Jack White. So I'd like to name him Band Room at the old high school, junior high now, after Jack White.
That's your motion?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to honor the Band Room after Mr. Jack White. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Do y'all plan on having any special events? Any of these, if you do?
Yeah, for Freddie Barry, we are. We're going to wait till our first home game in about February, the basketball. So we're going to, I hope we have a sign on the floor then that says Freddie Barry McHenry.
I know a little story about Jack White. When I got on the board, I guess it's okay to make a comment all the time.
You can.
When I got on the board, I was at a recognition ceremony, and we were having a meal, and I was sitting at the table by Jack. Dr. Johnson was across the table, Andy Johnson, and a couple, two, three, Jerry was there, I think, and a few other board members around, and we were talking about high school athletics and what all we needed in the athletic department, and Jack was kind of quiet. All of a sudden, Jack walked back in his chair and goes, "What about the band department? What we going to do for the band department?" And I looked over at Jack and I said, "Man, he's serious." You know, so I said, "Jack, we going, we going to have the band department." So Mr. Jack was always supporting the band, and he didn't mind voicing it. So he was a major supporter of the band, and I can remember, like Davey said, when I was in high school, Mr. Jack had a heck of a band program at Washita High School, and they went on to NLU at the time and had Sound of the Day. And Sound of Today was a fantastic band, marching band, so they've got a lot of accolades. So I think it's a well-deserved honor and proud for it.
Thank you. I didn't know we were going to read the accolades. It had several pages here, but I will share what Mr. Lane said about Coach Orledge. I don't want to shortchange Coach. Says, "Please accept our request to name the Rebel Booster Pavilion of West Monroe High School in honor of Jerry Orledge. I've received requests from Coach Glenn Hunt requesting that the pavilion should be dedicated to Coach Orledge. Committee listed both unanimously agrees with Coach Hunt. We believe the contributions of Coach Orledge as made to the students of West Monroe High School and to our community deserve this honor. His 50 years of coaching has changed thousands of lives, launched numerous players and coaches to the highest rank in athletics. Coach Orledge plays, players claim Super Bowl championships, national championships, and too many personal honors named. Many coaches say that Jerry Orledge is the reason they became a coach. Coach Orledge is a legend among coaches." And I agree. Item number seven. To consider renaming Washita, West Washita High School Football Equipment Room in honor of Ricky Crowell. Mike Beatty?
Thank you, Tom. I'd like to read a little something about Ricky. New and parts of Coach Willie and a special man. Said, "Recently retired director of high schools for Washita Parish School Board and former principal of West Washita High School, Mr. Mickey Merritt hired Ricky Crowell, Coach Crowell, in 1988 while coaching Calhoun High School. Then they both joined West Washita High School in 1989. Coach Crowell was assistant under Billy Bell, Lake Gale Ashley, Pat Collins, Don Timmy from 1989 to 2003. He worked with linebackers and had all the equipment needs during this time. He later returned to the equipment room in 2017 under leadership of Matt Middleton and the current coach, Mike Rainwater, until his passing in September 2022." I'd like to tell a couple stories about Ricky. There was no one more organized than Ricky. Coach Collins was the second most organized man I've ever known, but Ricky was more organized than Coach Collins. When they were in a meeting and really good coaching staff, we were sitting there, and Coach Collins, I think we'd had a good win, and he was feeling good, and Ricky sat down with his clipboard that he always had, and he said, and Coach Collins, you could tell, was feeling pretty good, said, "Ricky, how many shoelaces we got?" "Just a minute, Coach." Told him that. "How many snap helmets?" "Just a second." Told him. Went down, I mean, to the most, littlest things you can think of, and Coach started grinning, and Ricky said, "Coach, I got my stuff together now." And Coach just fell out laughing. He said, "Rick Crowell, I love you." And you didn't get many "I love yous" out of Coach Collins. Let me just say that. So that was a good day. And I'll never forget, he always had the itinerary for the buses. He knew when we were going to be at a specific red light, a time, the stop sign, the time. It was unbelievable how organized he was. You never, and you could always count on Ricky every time. He was going to be there early, stay late, wash. I remember nights, he spent the night at the field house till the next morning and be up cleaning and everything. So I'd like to make a motion that we, West Washita High School Football Equipment Room be named in honor of Ricky Crowell.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Item number eight. Consider changes, I'm sorry. Consider changes to People Progression Plan for 2324 school year. Mr. Curtis Puck.
Good afternoon, Mr. Como and gentlemen, Ms. May. A few weeks ago, you were presented with the proposed changes to our 2324 People Progression Plan that came about from the People Progression Plan Committee that met several months back. So what you received a few weeks ago and what you have before you today are only the proposed changes that are needed for the 2324 school year. The other information in the People Progression Plan, it has remained the same and has not changed. These changes actually need your approval today so that we can get them to the State Department by the 30th of this month for the State Department's approval of our People Progression Plan. So I'm available at this point if you have any questions or if you have anything you need me to further explain that was presented to you earlier in regard to our changes, proposed changes, for this 2324 school year.
Any discussion? Motion to accept these policy changes for this current school year?
I so move that we accept these changes to the People Progression Plan for the 2324 school year.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Item nine. Policy Review Committee Report and Policy Approval Considerations. Jennifer Nichols and Ms. Carrie Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Board. The Policy Revision Committee met on Tuesday, September 26th, to discuss the policies you were given for consideration at review at the last board meeting to be voted on today. The committee reviewed all of the policies and agreed to leave the policy changes the way forethought presented on these nine policies. Based on the recommendations from the Policy Review Committee and no changes were recommended, we are asking today that the Board approved these nine policies as is.
We have a motion to approve?
I move.
We have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you.
And I have even better news. We have no new policies to be considered at this time.
Thank you very much.
Which Jennifer means our policy committee tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday will be canceled. Great. Thanks.
And I hope y'all been getting the people that's doing the motions and the seconds, because I've got to ask. Financial report, item number 10, August 31st, Ms. Micas.
You have in your packet the financial report for the period ending August 31st, 2023. This is the second month of our fiscal year. You'll notice on the first page, first column, for the general fund, we're ending the period with $36.7 million in fund balance. This is 115% of where we were at this time last year, so just a little above where we were at this time last year with our fund balance, primarily due to a large one-time cost reimbursement that we received in the first month of the year. So we're not expecting that high of a percentage to continue throughout the year. That was just a one-time cost reimbursement, and then we expect the revenues to return to normal. With the District One M and O, which is the second column, we're ending the period with $26.8 million in fund balance. That's 97.9% of where we were at this time last year. I know last year, we had talked a lot about ESSER funds being available and how we were using those funds in maintaining our facilities through that time. Well, now, as you'll, you'll see in our budget and our financial reports, that we're getting what I would say back to normal, back to maintaining our facilities primarily through the M and O funds, and that's why you'll see that, that that fund balance will come, come back down closer to normal. As you'll see, we started the year, we're at about $2 million, $2 million in expenditures in maintaining our facilities to date. If you'll look at the last, I won't go through all the other funds unless you have specific questions, but if you'll look at the last two pages, just a reminder that this gives you more information. It's a three-year comparison of the general fund, revenues, expenditures, and the M and O, three-year comparison of revenues, expenditures, and fund balances to date.
We have a motion to accept this report?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Micas. Item number 11, construction renovation projects report. Mr. Himmle.
Thank you, Mr. Como. In your handout, it's kind of a little short today. We'll go through it briefly. With TBA, we have five projects, two to be voted on today. Start at the elementary, the site work is being underway now, temporary bus lanes have been coordinated with the principal to get the next part of that project started, and I think we're gonna move the T building. I think, plan to move them in Christmas, I gonna move them during Thanksgiving, so. West Washington, that'll be voted on today. Security upgrades, we're actually doing a punch list this week on the man trap, so we'll get that done and get those out of the way. Still waiting on the generator for this gentleman's freezer and cooler at the warehouse. And in Drew Elementary, y'all will be voting on that today also. With Architect Alliance, we got three projects. Washington High School, the office area, electrical work continues, working on the HVAC continues, and then the painting is beginning. Well, that's actually on the press box, that first one. The second one is the office area, they put the ceiling grid in, granite tops being installed, new doors and hardware and all that's being done. And then Washington Junior High, that project was awarded to Southern Roofing at the last meeting. Materials have been ordered, and we'll be having a construction meeting on October the 19th at 9:00 a.m. for that project, so. And then I just hand, due to time, I just hand-rep the rest of what I had. Western Monroe High School, the man lift is installed, we got the handrails in, we'll be asking the fire marshal to come doing the final inspection, probably end of next week on that man, man lift. Start at the middle school, that job keeps moving forward. We got some bad news at the last meeting, but I think that's been resolved through Mr. Geis and some phone calls that were made. Had a problem with the transformer being in May of 2024, so that date has been moved to November the 2nd of 2023, so.
And I just need to follow up on that. I just need to thank Amanda Edge and her team and energy. They really stepped up and helped us on that. We would have been in a bind without that, but they really did, so.
Appreciate you stepping forward, Todd, taking care of that, too. Be plus. Are we still looking at, like, March as a tentative completion date for that school?
I believe you are. Start at the high, I think we get permission on that job today. Richwood High School, multipurpose, still moving forward. They started on the front entrance during the fall break. They got one side of the sidewalk, they got all the sidewalks tore out of the front, but they got one side sidewalk replaced to where they can still use the front, so that job continues to move forward. Our next meeting for that is October the 26th at 10:00 a.m. And then our treatment plants, you know, we've been working on it, the plant, the tanks are in, we've been waiting on the blowers and the motors, everything that goes inside these tanks to, to come in, and that's with anything else, it's just like a generator. It takes forever to get this stuff, so. And that's all I have. If y'all have any questions.
I do. I'm just, just concerned about just two or three projects in, in, in the district where represent. I know at Richwood High School, we had talked about the padding surface for the turf field. When do we plan to do that?
That is done, determined. Is Bobby still in here?
Well, it's, it's a part of...
It's a part of the pri, of our bond money. As all the three high schools, so Bobby has those fields tested every year, so when they reach a point where those tests indicate the pad needs to be replaced, that's when we'll do it.
Okay.
Mike, that, anything else you want to add on that, Bobby?
What about the additional security cameras? When were those?
What's that?
The additional security cameras. When do we plan to address those?
Do we do that down at recruit? I've not put any security down at that.
No, I'm saying, Richwood, Richwood Middle, Robinson, Shady Grove, Swayze.
Reverend McCoy and Clint wants to jump in, he can. You know, as we know, the board has approved for additional cameras to be in our classrooms. We are, in addition to those, replacing some cameras, so I think it would be prudent for the board to make sure that we can get as many paid for with ESSER that we have budgeted before we go off on another route. That's been our thinking for some time now.
And there's several schools on the east side that are getting security cameras, too, I think, Harold.
Yeah, but I...
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all right. Robinson Elementary, pay parking lot at back of campus. When are we planning to do that?
I talked with Ms. Regina yesterday about that. I suggested we hire engineer. We did get a, a cost analysis on the parking lot, and it was right at $250,000 to do that parking lot at Robinson, but my suggestion would be us hire engineer to go and, like we did Jack Hayes and Drew, to where we know it's 100% correct when we build it, and we don't create more problems.
Well, I, I was just asking, because it, it's been on the list, when all the other things went on the list. We built some schools since then, and still waiting for a parking lot.
Yeah.
And so my question was, when? I mean, I know that we plan to, but, you know, I have people asking me, I'm sure that the other board members have people asking them, when a certain thing is gonna be. We've built some schools, and we're gonna be in those schools in March, but there's a parking lot that I asked about several months ago, and it still has not even been addressed.
It's been addressed, and we got a cost on it like you asked me to, and it was right at $250,000, but that, that's gonna put it out to where we need to put it out for bid, and I'm suggesting we get an engineer hired to go down there and survey it and make sure it's done right, and then we get permission to bid it to where it's done correctly.
So I know, I want it done correctly. I'm sure everyone else would, too.
And if you got an engineering firm you would prefer to use, we use Lasby Associates, we've used several of the engineering firms to, to do these kind of type of projects, so.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
I, I want it done right, but my, my concern is that, when? And I, I'm not asking a hard question, it's simply that...
We can move forward with engineering so we can get...
I'm just saying, it's been on the, it's been on here like everything else, and a lot of stuff has been done. Washington has a complete parking lot, and it's been done, but this, this is just one part, it hasn't been done.
Reverend McCoy, as you realize, we, we wanted to finish your Richwood Middle project, get it outbid like it's going out or being approved today before we moved on to that, but we can start that process now as we finish the bid for Richwood Middle.
Kind of following up with what Harold's talking about, though. Dr. Coker had a timeline schedule, and I'm sure he probably passed that down to you.
He did not.
He did not?
No. I have, I have, I have all of my stuff in this folder right here.
Well, the last time I had a visit with Dr. Coker, he had a timeline schedule on all the projects and, and, you know, timeline, and I thought he had passed that down to Todd. It might be somewhere in the office here floating around, though. I don't know.
Well, there's, like I said, there's no reason we can't go ahead and start the engineering on that.
You don't want to take, you don't want to take responsibility.
Sometimes you set to kind of pride things along.
Yeah, it was a timeline for all the projects to be taken, bidded, and completed.
Yeah.
Because I know Sterlington got delayed quite a bit on the high school and the elementary because of some turn lane situations up there we were trying to take care of. So the timeline was completed, and I thought we had, apparently we don't.
Yeah, we saw it at Sterlington because, you know, all the stuff we had to get done. Looking good, by the way.
Well, since you brought up parking lots, Mr. Lane, have we heard anything about the money that we were supposed to receive for overlaying West Monroe High School parking lot?
I got Jay Morris, he had to contact with the [inaudible].
Okay, good to. Any other questions?
I, I got something I can say.
All right, go ahead.
In the future, when we do any projects in the future, new schools, buildings, office rooms, we need to specify what kind of paint we want to use on those buildings. Starts at high school's being built, I got a job going down, they use eggshell paint on it, it's not gonna hold up. It's painted, it's got light spots in it, Mike will back me up on it. We need to start specifying, these contractors gonna go in there, use the cheapest paint they can get, and I guarantee you, in five years, we're gonna repaint this job I'm doing now, because I look, Friday, I went with Adam School, and looked at it, they finished the paint job up, it's not up to scale for, for my approval. There's nothing we can do about it, because we just specified what kind of paint. But in the future, when we bid these jobs, I want it to spec, a, a, a good, high grade of paint. There's several grades of paint, they got a separate paint, they got about six different grades, I don't have to have a separate paint, but I want a good latex paint put on the wall.
David, we need to get a paint specialist, let him be on the committee, and start looking at the quality of paint we purchasing.
Thank you, Mr. Himmle.
Have you?
Good, thank you.
Just the paint's not any good. Evaluation of biz. Mr. Jones?
Como, board members? Pretty long list here, so if you don't mind, we'll take these one at a time. First one is the Richwood Middle School multipurpose building. Recommendation is for man's construction.
We have a motion to accept?
I'll move.
Second? Any discussion?
Yes, one question. Bobby?
Yes, sir.
I know you had the budget amount was $2,300,000.
Two mil, $2,200,000 was what was announced at the bid opening. That's why it's written on the sheet. $2,200,000 was the budget set by the architect.
You are correct, Reverend McCoy. I noticed that it, on the agenda, it should have said $2,200,000.
It should have said $2,200,000.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But like we discussed, you, we're, we're good with the overage in your budget.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none.
Next item is the Drew roof replacement. Recommendation is for Terry's Roofing and Sheet Metal with a base bid of $316,000.
I come in, we had a budget in it.
Yes, sir.
We had one, it came in at 1.1 million.
It was quite a spread.
We have a motion to accept Terry's Roofing.
I make a motion?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Menches and tables.
Yes, we had actually, at the last board meeting, had table bid item number four, recommend Evergreen Landscape with a price of $875. That's an eight-foot rectangular table. That's the only one we, that's the last one to approve.
Which one was that?
It was number four.
Number three.
Number three. Okay, $875,000 by Evergreen Landscape.
Should be number four for $875,000.
Gotcha.
$875?
For, that's per each.
Budget was 900, huh?
Yes.
Per each?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Man.
One quick question, Bobby, where are we at timeline-wise on getting these benches and stuff in for these pavilions?
I spoke to the manufacturer this morning, and they're gonna ship them on January the 8th.
January the 8th?
I've ordered 90 of them so far.
That's cool.
They should be there, they should be in our warehouse that week.
January the 8th?
Yes, sir.
Is that, how many more do we need, or is that gonna take care of it?
I'm waiting on some of the schools to give me a response back. I think I got a response back from the high schools, but I did not get a few responses back on the middle schools, so, but I'm able to place another order, it's not a big deal.
We have a motion to accept Evergreen Landscapes, $875 for these items?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. West Washington High School additions and renovations.
Yes, the recommendation is for gentry construction and accepting all three alternates. That total amount is $5,907,000.
I heard, oh, we have a motion to accept gentry construction.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Item number five, West Monroe High School additions and renovations.
Yes, the recommendation is to accept the one and only bid from Geo Services, the base bid and the add alternate together, and that total amount is $1,737,000.
Have a motion to accept Geo Services?
I make a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Como, thank you, board members.
Permission to bid?
Do you want to do all these at once, Mr. Como?
That would be wonderful.
Great. First item is for outdoor classrooms being paid for with ESSER funds, that's going for the elementary schools. Next item is Sterlington High School additions and renovations being paid for out of the east side bonds. There's a chiller replacement required at Swarthower being paid for M and O. Linwell Elementary additions and renovations, Westside Sales Tax. And the last item is for Ms. Carrero's walk-in cooler and freezer.
Those are going at Crossley and [inaudible].
We have a motion to give permission to bid on these five items?
I'm not gonna...
And a second? Any discussion?
On that, one, one question, Bobby, on the outdoor classrooms with ESSER funds?
Yes, sir.
What's our plans on that? Is that the ones that we're building pavilion on, on each one? Is it gonna be every elementary school, or?
school or?
It's all elementary schools.
All elementary schools will have the pavilion with an outdoor?
Crosley's the only one we're not doing, Miss May.
But the rest of them will have a pavilion and an outdoor classroom? It is, that is one and the same.
That's what I said, it's all one, one thing.
One and the same.
So it's gonna have a slab and a cover.
Well, it, it will serve as an outdoor classroom as the principal wants.
Okay. There'll be a slab and a cover.
Okay. And will serve as a classroom?
Yes, sir. It can serve as a classroom.
And we'll have the tables, uh, as well?
Yes, sir. We have, uh, money budgeted for tables and, and, uh, for those as well.
And Crosley paid for their own several years ago. Keep that in mind.
Yeah.
We may want to...
We ought to do something extra for them.
That's right. Do we do a motion? Second. And have a second for this by Mr. Puck. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. November 14th, our next scheduled meeting. Mr. Superintendent, do you have a report?